Kaiser City Council in regular session. It is Monday, December 21st, 2020. And ask our city recorder to please call roll.
Mayor Clark?
Here.
Council President Freeman?
Here.
Council Parsons?
Here.
Council Herrera?
Here.
Council Smith?
Here.
Council Reed?
Here.
And Council Kohler?
Here.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Um, so does K-23 have the image of the flag so we can do the flag salute? They do. So if all would rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right. Uh, under special orders of business, I don't have anything on the agenda tonight. So we are going to go ahead to go to committee reports. And I have, uh, Matt Lawyer is here from the Parks Board to give us a report. Tracy, do you want to go ahead and get him queued up?
I think I'm on here. Can you hear me, Madam Mayor?
Can hear you just fine, thank you.
Wonderful. Uh, good evening, Madam Mayor, Council and staff. For the record, Matt Lawyer, Kaiser Parks Advisory Board. Um, so this is unique, kind of cool to do this. First time, uh, participating live in a Zoom meeting, so bear with me. Um, on December 8th, we met, the Kaiser Parks Advisory Board met in regular session. Uh, we had, uh, a pretty eventful meeting. Um, started off with some public testimony. We had a great, uh, public testimony from a gal named Lisa who came in and just, um, you know, one of the nice things about our Parks Group is occasionally we get to hear from folks in the community that really talk about how great, uh, the Park staff are doing. And Lisa came in to talk specifically about Dawn and some of the hard work he's been doing over at Kaiser Rapids and other places that she's seen him. Uh, so it's good to kind of get that feedback and, uh, you know, take a moment to recognize just how great our staff is in the city. Uh, we heard from Mike Bays from Kaiser, uh, McNary Youth Baseball. Um, they were trying to work a deal out where they can do some improvements to Little League, uh, T-ball fields over at Claggett Creek Park so that they can potentially get some use out of that. Um, McNary Youth Baseball often uses the school diamonds, but because of COVID, they don't have access to those things. And so they're looking at some alternatives for their kids. Uh, Carol Dorfler, um, came and talked to us a little about the master plan project, which we'll talk a little bit more about here in just a second. But, uh, I think she was able to get some of those questions answered by the Public Works Director and, um, so, and then got some additional answers later on during the master plan presentation by the consultant. We had some testimony from Todd, excuse me, Tom and Carol Ho- uh, Holman, also specifically related to the master plan and some of the questions that they felt didn't quite, they didn't necessarily understand the, the, the questions and had some interpretation issues. Um, but, um, anyways, those questions I think got answered later on, as did most of them that were brought up early on. Uh, the big thing for the night was the consultant, MIG, uh, did a presentation, Cindy Mendoza, on kind of the overall timeline for the master plan and a bunch of other things. And, um, I don't want to steal any thunder away from the Public Works Director, but, um, it was a very good, uh, presentation. I think it gave the folks on the board a lot to think about. Um, some of the things that were specifically brought up was, uh, making sure they were reaching out to our neighborhood associations, the Latino groups, the faith-based organizations, uh, as well as, uh, school groups and so on and so forth to kind of really get as much of a robust, um, outreach as possible. Um, one of the things that we found really interesting was, um, kind of an anecdotal, uh, piece of evidence as it relates to how well Kaiser responds to things. With about 40,000 people, she had received just over 200 and, I think 270 plus, uh, responses on the first week of their survey. In comparison to Sacramento with over 400,000 people, they had gotten less. And so, uh, Kaiser is doing a really good job. Um, I actually teamed up with Carol Dorfler after the meeting and sometime, I think it was last week, uh, worked with David Dally and, uh, Kaiser TV to record, uh, a message from myself as a Parks Board member, but also, uh, the three neighborhood associations just encouraging folks to continue to do the outreach on this park survey. So I'm hoping the numbers have gone up, but, um, I'm sure at some point next month we'll get to hear, uh, how much better those numbers are. Um, my colleague on the Parks Board, Toni Hamilton, has been doing a great job, uh, continuing to do outreach and putting it out there for folks to do more outreach and encourage more people to participate in the survey. She actually got it in with our Kaiser schools. And so I know Whittaker and McNary at least shared the link, and so that's really positive. Um, we had our typical parks reports, nothing outstanding there. Um, one of the things that Robert talked about was the Claggett Creek, uh, play structure, which is still underway and hope- hopefully completing that sometime soon. Um, I don't think there's a specific date that I see here on the notes, but, um, leaf season this year was quite a bit of a challenge. Uh, leaves decided to all come down at the same time. And so it's kept the Park staff pretty busy, but you know, they do such a great job. Uh, it's just really nice to see that, but, um, and lastly, uh, it was kind of bittersweet. Um, our meeting would have been, uh, Clint Hollins' last Parks Board meeting. Um, unfortunately, he wasn't able to attend, but, um, it would have been his last meeting after almost 15 years of service on the Kaiser Parks Advisory Board. And so, uh, we all took an opportunity to say nice things to Clint and maybe a couple light jabs here and there just to keep it real. But, um, really appreciate all of his time and effort and things that he's put into the park system, so, um, I think that's it, unless there's any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Lawyer? Uh, Council Kohler?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to say that I, I got a, uh, citizen that came to talk to me about, um, Robert Johnson and all the work that he and the rest of the crew have done. And it was just glowing reports, so I just wanted to make sure that you were able to take that back to them, Matt. Thank you.
All right.
I'll let them know when I see them.
Fabulous. Um, yeah, thank you very much. Um, I did my interview today for the, uh, Parks Master Plan, really enjoyed that conversation. So, um, I encourage people to, you know, get on there, do the survey, keep sharing it out. I think we're just going to have to really keep this going. Um, when does the survey close? Do you know?
Uh, I'll defer to Mr. Lawyer, but I believe it's the end of the month.
Uh, that's correct, Madam Mayor. Uh, the, we've gone back and forth between the 28th of December and the 1st of January. Um, the consultant and I have, um, I was told late last week that they hit, or the survey has hit the 400 response mark. Um, those are not all complete surveys, but the be- the biggest majority of them are complete surveys. So, um, we'll kind of gauge it as we move forward over the next week or so and see if we end the survey or keep it going into January.
Okay. Sounds good. Other questions? I am not seeing any more. Thank you so much and have a Merry Christmas, Matt.
Thank you, also.
All right. Yeah, let's see. I just did something with my display, so let me see if I can undo the damage. There we go, I'm back at it. All right, um, so that's all we have for the, um, liaison reports. Uh, Tracy, was there anybody else who was going to give a report? Okay, no. So that takes us to public testimony. This time is provided for citizens to address the council on any matters other than those on the agenda scheduled for a public hearing. We have no public hearing scheduled tonight. Um, Tracy, is there anybody who has signed up for, uh, testimony tonight?
We did not have any requests for public testimony tonight.
Okay. And I do have a few, uh, emails that have come in, so I will note them for, uh, the written record. Um, I've received one that I forwarded to the city council from Dana Petry Miller, resident of Kaiser. Topic, make our community safe from fossil fuels. We got an email from Barbara Hunter, resident of Kaiser. Follow-up on fate of heritage trees. For people who are watching, that was, uh, the public test, uh, public hearing we had, uh, at our previous meeting. And then I got one from, um, oh, that was Mayor's Association, never mind. Um, and that's all I've got for written public testimony that was submitted. That takes us then to administrative action, item 8A, an order requiring removal of broken sidewalk on Harcourt Avenue side of property known as 1360 Ivy Way Northeast, Kaiser, Oregon. City manager?
Good morning, Madam Mayor, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Chris, Madam Mayor and Council. At the last meeting, the council had a public hearing on this matter and the mayor just mentioned it with regard to the property located on Ivy Way and the two large trees located on the, uh, adjacent street of Harcourt. And the council, after the public hearing, directed us to prepare an order, uh, allowing the trees to remain, but requiring the removal of the broken sidewalk. We've come back with that order, allowing the property owner 60 days to remove, um, the sidewalk. And that is before you tonight for action, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Were there any questions on the staff report or the agenda item? I'm not seeing any. Uh, Council President Freeman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt an order requiring removal of broken sidewalk on Harcourt Avenue side of property known as 1360 Ivy Way Northeast, Kaiser, Oregon.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt an order requiring removal of broken sidewalk on Harcourt Avenue side of property known as 1360 Ivy Way Northeast, Kaiser, Oregon. Any discussion? I'm not seeing any. All in favor, please unmute and signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please unmute and signify by saying no. I hear no objection. Motion passes unanimously. That takes us then to item HB, which is the resolution approval of field usage rates for the 2021 season at Kaiser Little League City Park. City manager?
Good morning, Madam Mayor, City Attorney Johnson?
Uh, thank you, Chris, Madam Mayor and Council. Uh, this, uh, item comes on the council's agenda every year. The agreement calls for council approval of what I call the field slot rates or the field usage rates, regardless of whether or not the manager of the fields is raising them or not. The Little League has indicated they're not going to raise the rates or request a raise. And so, uh, it is before you tonight for approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions on the staff report? Nelson Herrera?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Are you guys not using the, uh, raise hand option?
Oh, I'm sorry, I just saw it.
No, I raised my hand. Hey, listen, um, did anybody receive a letter from Clint Hollins? He had talked to me earlier in regards to, uh, um, he had some input for that particular, uh, the, uh, the Kaiser Little League fields.
He's talked to me, but no, not a written, um, not a written item. Did you want to submit that for, um, the record or did you want to talk about it?
Well, he, uh, I advised him to contact Tracy or, uh, and let her know that you, that you were gonna, he was gonna talk or testify, and he had some concerns. I just wanted to know if he, if he chimed in or not.
Tracy?
Specifically, no, it was something to do with the cost of the rental of, of the fields.
I spoke with Clint this afternoon and he said he was just going to listen to the meeting. He didn't want to speak, so.
Okay.
Didn't, did not submit anything or request a link.
Okay, well, thank you. I just wanted, I, I promise that I mentioned it. Thank you.
Well, and, uh, in all fairness, um, he has, uh, mentioned that he has concerns about the slot rates, whether they're competitive, um, especially considering how low the, uh, slot rates are compared to some of the comparables around us. But we haven't gotten a request from the Little League organization to change that, so I don't know that, um, if they're making it, um, I don't know that I would want to second guess them on that. Uh, Council Parsons?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I think my concern is, is are we operating without a contract, however, with this? Shannon, I mean, how can we set slot rates if they're not managing the fields?
So, uh, the, the agreement with Little League, uh, allowed for an extension in the city manager, and I think he alerted the council of this several months ago, uh, I don't remember when, has extended it to the, and I don't know the exact date, but so, so they're going to run it for the 2021 season and they're still under contract. So the, the request for proposals, which Little League, uh, came to the meeting a few meetings ago.
Remember that.
As I indicated to them there, that is, um, getting quite close. I'd worked on it several weeks ago, was not able to get back to it until recently. I worked on it some more last week and met with Bill and Chris and went over some issues this morning on it. And my, my goal was to get it out no later than the end of the year, and I think I'm going to be pretty close to that, uh, uh, so that'll be going out, uh, in the next couple of weeks, hopefully.
Okay, thank you.
So the, the targeting, the targeted date for transference from Little League to whoever the next operator is going to be will be right after the fall ball season, uh, probably November 1st is what we're targeting, so.
Okay. Any other questions? Council Kohler and then Council President Freeman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, how do we know that there's enough money really coming in, uh, with the current slot rates to take care of the fields?
Well, we haven't had a problem in the past. I guess depending on what your level of the fields are, the fields have ranged a bit over the last several years. That they're actually in a lot better shape in the last couple of years than they were before that. Um, but we, we have, we have never been concerned about them bringing enough money to do at least the basic maintenance of the fields. The question has always been whether or not they can do, um, any major improvements or not, and that's always been the rub.
So for example, there are dugouts that need to be replaced. There's a bunch of fencing, especially around the, the major field, the big field.
Yeah.
And, uh, are there funds to do those things? That's, that's what I question, because they have a lot of, uh, a lot of tournaments. Those fields were used a lot this year. They should have a ton of money. Uh, but then, I don't know, do we ever get an accounting of what those are? Or maybe Mr. Wood can help with that?
Uh, yes, we do get an annual accounting from them. Um, as I recall, I think it's about due. I think it's due by January, February-ish, so.
Yeah, thanks. Sorry. Thanks, Tim. I was trying to remember. It's soon and the budget will show what they plan to spend. Um, and I, you know, we haven't, we haven't had an issue there. I, I understand what you're getting at, Council Kohler, uh, and there will probably be some issue with Little League in terms of, uh, doing items if they're not going to be the manager, I guess would be the concern. But if it's a safety issue, then, uh, Chris and Bill and I will be involved and follow up on that.
Um, Mr. Lawyer?
Just a point of clarification. Thank you, Madam Mayor, for Council Kohler. The slot rate that's being referred to is the rate that's charged to other local leagues. It's not the rate they charge for tournaments. Okay? So just know that, that is just the rate that, that KLL charges, MYB or another local softball league or Cal Ripken or whoever the local league may be to use a facility. It is not the, what they charge for tournaments.
So essentially, the rate that they charge is the rate that they charge themselves as the Little League program paid to Little League as the manager and then any other parties that might be using it, like MYB or, um, KSA or whoever might be using it. But it's also the rate that they pay, and they have been required to actually keep that left-hand, right-hand thing separate. So that's the rate that they're charging both other users as well as their own participants.
Um, a couple of questions about that. How can we really, uh, approve slot fees if we don't know what the budget is? And then the second question, um, my understanding, uh, is I've heard from several people that, that you schedule the field and once that field is scheduled, that's when the slot fees, uh, become effective. But it's pretty common practice for certain teams to just kind of look at the schedule and say, oh, there's nothing, nothing scheduled, so they just go down and use it, not generating any slot fees.
Uh, I might, um, interject on that one a little bit. As I understand, they were able to make a difference on that one this year because with that same mobile app, what they did was if they weren't scheduled, that's when they were doing maintenance. So if they wanted to make sure, if people want to make sure that the field was available and not undergoing watering or some other maintenance, they had to reserve it. So, um, as I understand, that, um, kind of changed things. Also, the demand was higher this year because, uh, our fields were the only game in town.
I know there were, there were at least, uh, a couple of different occurrences where nothing was scheduled, and so, uh, somebody went out and turned the water on to water the fields and they got really mad because the fields were being watered and they wanted to practice even though they hadn't scheduled anything.
Right.
So I know there were some things going on there that, that, I mean, if we're going to have a level playing field, we need to have a level playing field.
Well, and I would agree, but, um, city manager?
Well, I was just going to mention here, so we've never really been involved in their budgeting of the complex. Um, our overview of the slot rates was basically to verify that they weren't charging, um, another group, another Kaiser group, an exorbitant amount of money and charging themselves less. So it's really more of an equity and fairness issue between teams, not anything else. And so we have never gotten into the business of actually going through and budgeting their complex expenses and maintenance for them, other than to identify periodically where there are safety issues. Otherwise, the complex is theirs to run.
Any other questions from folks? Uh, Council President Freeman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't have a question, I just really have a comment. I, um, was actually glad to see the slot fees where they are because I know in years past, uh, the fees had become increasingly high and that, um, was a barrier for teams to participate and utilize those fields. I get the whole maintenance and safety and making sure that the, that the park is safe, um, for all users, but, um, I also want as many of our youth to be able to use those fields. And as we know, the higher, the more things cost, the more, um, barriers that puts into place for, um, all of our community that may not be able to participate. So I appreciate that they're looking at it, um, hopefully to have as many participants as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on the slot fees? All right, uh, Council President Freeman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt resolution R-2020, approval of field usage rates for the 2021 season at Kaiser Little League City Park.
Let's second that.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt resolution R-2020, approval of field usage rates for the 2021 season at Kaiser Little League City Park. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed, please signify by saying no?
No.
Motion passes, uh, 6-1 with the no being Council Kohler. And that will then take us to the consent agenda. Council President Freeman, would you please read the items on the consent agenda?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There's two items on the consent calendar tonight. There's an item, I'm sorry, item 9A, a resolution appointing, uh, Kaiser hearings officer and authorizing city manager to enter into contract with Brewer and Cologne PC for hearings officer services. And 9B is approval of the December 7th, 2020 city council regular session minutes.
Thank you very much. Do either of these need to be polled? I see no polls. Council President Freeman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt the consent calendar, items 9A and B.
Let's second that.
The consent calendar has been moved and seconded. All in favor, please unmute, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please unmute and signify by saying no? Hearing no objections, the motion passes unanimously. Council liaison reports. So, uh, since with these Brady Bunch screens, it's kind of, uh, random, so I get to be random tonight. So, uh, but I'll put in the chat who is, uh, coming up next, but how about I start with, uh, Council Smith? And, um, we did a tree lighting. And then, uh, next up will be Council Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, we had, uh, quite the experience. It was awesome. We had, uh, I got volunteered by the, uh, people in Detroit to get a tree up to Detroit and have a Christmas tree lighting. And I wasn't exactly sure how that was going to turn out. And of course, I was a little paranoid about the whole COVID stuff, but, uh, Mayor Clark went with me and we were able to hit up, uh, Mr. Christmas, Dave Walery, who got that tree lit beautifully. And it turned out to be about, I'm guessing 250 people showed up. Uh, all socially distanced, don't panic, but it was pretty amazing experience. People wore their masks, but for what it did for the community was just, it was amazing. And I actually, you know what, Council-elect Duran was there as well. I didn't get to talk to him, but he was there. So it was something that, uh, I, I was so blessed to be a part of, and I know that, uh, Mayor Clark felt the same way. It's one of those things that had never been done in Detroit, and so to be able to help put that together and be a little Kaiser in Detroit was amazing. So that was a, that was a huge win. And then for the rest of my report, I just want to take a quick second, and I'm sure that, uh, Mayor Clark will say something a little bit later, but I wanted to personally thank Counselor Parsons and Counselor Freeman, who have been, uh, tonight's their last, their last meeting. And I just, I can't even tell everybody how much they have helped me the last two years. They have been such great advocates and coaching, coaches and mentors and have spent hours with me explaining things and just helping me to understand how this whole thing works. And ladies, cheers to you both. You have done an amazing amount of work for this community and I cannot even, I can't even describe all of it. I, you know, Counselor Freeman, thank you so much for pushing the DEI stuff earlier this year in the last year and a half. Uh, obviously it was much more important than we ever could realize, uh, and it really came to fruition and I'm very proud of the work that you've done with that and I'm going to stay focused on it. And Counselor Parsons, you never got enough thanks for all the work that you've done for the city. So I personally just wanted to say thank you for all the work and the, you know, the whole eclipse thing and all of that. I'm going to miss you both terribly, but I know I can still call you and I know I can always get you to my house for wine, so thank you both. That's all I got.
All right, thank you so much. Um, let's go then to Counselor Parsons and then, um, Counselor Herrera, you'll be on deck.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. My report is short and sweet, and thank you, Elizabeth, for the kind words. Um, this is bittersweet, being my last meeting. Um, so, you know, I, I just want to thank, while I have just the staff on here, I want to thank the staff for your support over the last eight years plus, um, in mentoring me to become a better counselor and having me understand how a city is run and run quite good, I should say. Um, and, uh, you know, I want to thank all the committee people who volunteered their time to be on committees because without those committees advising us, we would, really wouldn't know what's going on in some of those places. So it, it, it's a whole big, you know, effect, uh, uh, and, and so I really appreciate that. Um, I tried to get on the, uh, chamber board Zoom meeting, um, and we failed terribly, miserably. They kind of locked me out, didn't realize they'd locked me out and then I couldn't get back in, so, um, not sure really what happened. Um, and then I attended the Marion County Commissioners, breakfast the following morning, uh, say goodbye to Sam, who is also retiring, going off into his boat in his fishing world, um, and, uh, all that he's done for Marion County. So, uh, I just, uh, want to say thank you again and, um, uh, will not be my final farewell as I will. So I just want to say thank you again and it will not be my final farewell, as I will have that on January 4th. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor Herrera and then Counselor Reed, you're on deck.
Okay, Matt did a wonderful job with the parks report, but I will add one thing, the Holmans, I really appreciate their input. And one thing that they brought up was something out of the ordinary and that was like an art wall, they thought, you know, for kids to express themselves. They brought that up. I thought it was a really good innovative idea. Anyway, we, the parks, and then on the next day, we had the, I had our OIN, Oregon Latinx Leadership Network. We had really incredible presentations in regards to the COVID relief and what they're doing all over the state to help some of these folks that really need help. And by the way, thanks to all those that participated, Elizabeth, all you guys that did your work over there at, over Detroit. I mean, that is so incredible. Anyway, so on a 16, also participated in the NAACP Community Police with, I believe you were there, which you mayor, and so was Chief T, I believe. And, and then the next day, I had the, well, I was invited to a, one of my good buddies with the Color Caucus is Counselor Imamie from Happy Valley, and he invited me to a really interesting forum and it was national. It was the Public Affairs Alliance of Iranian Americans and they interviewed recently Iranian, Iranian Americans that were elected to office. And my good friend Imamie Milster from Happy Valley was one of the panelists and it was a national thing and it was awesome. Anyway, that was a great experience. And then on the, coming up, we have the collab executive with the school district on the 8th of January. I had, by the way, I want to mention to all the folks that last minute helped me with the Salvador family from Kennedy Elementary. Boy, I tell you, that was great. I know all of us participated in giveaways, but this came last minute and it was a large family that had absolutely nothing. So we thank God to, you know, people come out of the, this is what I like about Kaiser, when you call for help, they come out of the woodwork. And I mean, even I got a check from North Carolina, a young man I coached once, sent a hundred bucks for food and it was incredible. I mean, it really got to me, but we're delivering on Wednesday, by the way, and it's incredible. I bought the six-year-old bike, it's going to be their best Christmas. And that made our, that made our holiday for my family and I. Also, I want to thank our newly elected president for the Color Caucus, Dr. Ed Jenkins, the city man, city councilor from Corvallis, the vice president is Commissioner Denise McGriff from Oregon City. Our treasurer is Roy Barone, my good buddy from Hermiston, a counselor, and Debbie Kebalas is our secretary for Color Caucus, and she's a counselor in Woodburn, Oregon. And I want to wish everybody, by the way, I do have something to say about our two folks that are leaving. Both of you, I know we bump heads and Marlene, you were like my first mentor with this council and you know that and you know how special you are to me in that respect. Did we bump heads a lot? Of course we did, but you know, I have a lot of respect and admiration for both of you. And I just want you to know that this, that you have added something to my repertoire as far as getting along and working with people together because I, I, you know, even an old man like me, it's almost 70, learn from young folks like you. And Kim, thank you very much. I admire your courage and all your help with DEI also. And I just, you guys are going to be greatly missed and I just, I really appreciate it. Marlene, thank you very much. You know how I feel about that, you know? Thank you for sticking up for the kids in McMary. That's what really got me. And you did so much wonderful work there and I appreciate it a lot. Thank you very much. That's all I got. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everybody.
Thank you, Counselor Herrera. Counselor Reed. And then Counselor Kohler, you're on deck.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I participated in some of the, the chamber gift wrapping. You and I were there doing that and Counselor Kohler did a whole lot in terms of recruiting volunteers and delivering and all of that. So that was also a big massive effort. And as Counselor Herrera said, you know, there's giving going all over the city. And so just a big thank you to all of those and especially those who are unsung and we just really appreciate it and the more we can work together to make this happen, the better we are as a city. So thank you to all of those people who participated in that. I also participated in the elective, elected officials training last Monday and some good information there, some really good reminders. The LOC put that together and that was really well done. We had a meeting to review council rules and that is coming along, perhaps not as quickly as we would have hoped, but it is coming along nicely and Shannon and Tammy have really helped make that an easy process. So thank you very much for helping out with that and facilitating that and we're, we're making some good progress. I also had an interview with the park survey, so that was also a great conversation. I was happy to see the questions that were being asked in that and that is, I'm impressed with the process on that. I also participated in a youth homelessness meeting and that was, I'm trying to get more involved in that and that was a really great first, first effort into, into that. And so some really great information, some excellent people working on that. It is the challenge to end youth homelessness and it's coming out of the Midwellamette Valley Homelessness, not Association.
Alliance.
Alliance, thank you. I can't remember that last acronym, but yes. Anyway, some, some, some great work happening there and again, I'm so impressed with people's dedication with that. So with that, just wanted to again thank Counselor Parsons and Counselor Freeman for everything you've done. You are fabulous and I really appreciate your example. You are wonderful role models and thank you all for, for everything you've done and it's been an honor to work with you. So thank you. And then also just Merry Christmas, Happy New Year and Happy Holidays to everyone and thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Counselor Reed. Counselor Kohler and then Counsel President Freeman, you're on deck.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The chamber giving baskets was really a wonderful event this year and I know a lot of people that I know were able to take part of that. 182 food baskets were delivered and helped over 500 kids. So that was an amazing thing just to watch all the different people come together to make that all possible. Right after doing that, I was asked to be involved in another little group where we were collecting toys for the Salvation Army. So on December 14th, we delivered a total of 1,025 toys to the Salvation Army in Salem and it's called Project Rescue Christmas 2020. Other groups that I was sharing that event with here in Oregon donated a total of over 10,000 toys to Salvation Army in the last two weeks. So we, we were notified eight days before the toys were supposed to be there and we just worked like crazy, 26, 100 emails seems like. But anyway, we got that all done and it was really, really amazing to watch the work that Salvation Army is doing. They have families that they've screened, that they have come in, the toys are all laid out on a, on tables and the parents are able to pick a large toy and a small toy and then they have the option to go and wrap them. So the kids have no idea where they come from. It's just really neat to see how that all works. Attended the work session on reviewing progress and goals and then the greeters on 10:15 with Representative Kurt Schrader, which was very interesting. Learned a lot of things there. On the 16th, I attended the policy, Council Policy Review Committee and we're making great progress. Tammy and Shannon have made that a lot easier. They, they put it down to 66 pages and then gave it to us. So that was really good. I had a long discussion with some people about the amount of reflection that's going on with the paint on, on our city roads and maybe we can have a little discussion on that with Bill Lawyer here in a little bit. And I did attend the, the Chamber Board Meeting. Danielle, that was her last meeting. We got to welcome our new active director and that's going to be neat to see all the things that are going on there. We've been very blessed to have an amazing chamber functioning here in Kaiser. The Kaiser Community Dinner this Wednesday, the 23rd, from 3:00 to 6:00 PM at St. Edward, they're doing a drive-by meal again. In November, we fed 900 people. We anticipate doing more than that. A special shout out to Ross Day, Bob Shackelford, Kyle Duran, Dave Walery and Bob Zelinski, who donated funds to purchase some special handmade cookies from Kay's Catering, which will be given out to the people that come. A Merry Christmas, I wish to all a safe and enjoyable holiday season, however you celebrate Kind of a bittersweet to know that we have two counselors that are retiring. So many things that I've, I've learned from them. They pull me off the ledge sometimes and, and teach me a lot of things. Again, a lot of respect for their courage, their stick-to-itiveness and their willingness to always make things happen. Again, thank you for everybody that makes things work. Had a story, but I'll wait, well, some other time we'll tell that about, ask me about two frogs sometime that fall in a hole and we'll, we'll tell that story. Trying to keep under the two hours for, for Elizabeth.
Sounds like a plan. All right, thank you so much. Council President Freeman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So why is it when you get on Zoom, your animals come in and either, you know, I have one who carries her toy around, she's been trying to get in bags, you know, never fails, right? She won't sit on my lap, she just makes trouble here. So thank you, everyone, for the kind words. It was very, very nice. I attended the Marion County Commissioner Breakfast and it was Commissioner Rotano's last breakfast along with Counselor Parsons and myself and a great shout out to Tracy Davis for making our breakfast at City Hall. Beautiful as always. Definitely a shout out to Wicked Sweets, Donuts in Kaiser. Commissioner Rotano likes the tiger stripe maple bars, which is maple bars with the chocolate on the top. And I shouldn't tell, but Sam had two, one from Ross and one from Wicked Sweets. And he said, hands down, Wicked Sweets are better. So anyone who has not had any of their pastries, cookies, scones, all the wonderful delicious things that Wicked Sweets has, I encourage all of you to visit them. It is worth every calorie that you so indulge on. So shout out and again, thank you Tracy for hosting us and for everyone attending. I attended the work session and I'll do a shout out to the community, just for everyone who has either donated their time, talents or treasures to our community who we know people are struggling right now, they need food assistance. We know our Kaiser Community Food Bank is lined up both Thursday mornings and Monday nights, because usually when I go by to council, it's lined up Monday nights. And I know Thursday morning, they were lined up when I went by in the morning to work. And so I just know several people are donating and it's just amazing to see the support that our community gives for its food, toys, youth. It's just the community dinner, it's just, we are so blessed to be in our community. And then for those of you that walk in the morning or at night when it's dark, this is my plea, so someone's going to take this over, like Trish had her thing on the Voluntary Recording Committee, what brought you to Kaiser? My thing is going to be make sure that you have lights on, on yourself, a flashlight, flashers, your animals have something so you can be seen when you, there we go. So you can be seen when you are out walking, jogging, de-stressing from a day on Zoom, whatever your passion is to be outside, just make sure that everyone can see you. And I think the other thing is, I'll just shout out to our state legislators who were in for a special session today. They passed some rent relief and some other tenant funds and so please look forward to what's coming out to help, again, people that are struggling in our community who have remained unemployed due to our pandemic or underemployed and who truly need some rental assistance and they've extended and some other funds will be coming out. And then also on the federal level, I think they're still working on some of that, but we have, you know, funds coming out from our federal delegates as well. And I know things take time, but a lot of this money does funnel through the state and they will work as hard as they can to get the funds out the door. And a real shout out to our community action agencies that are across the state who administer these funds to help people remain housed during this time. And again, with that, I wish everyone a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year and hopefully we'll dry out for the next couple of days. I know it's been raining and I walked by the river today and it's extremely high and moving really, really fast. So hopefully it'll dry out a little bit to kind of give it a little break. And with that, Merry Christmas, everyone. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. I want to join with everybody else in thanking Counselor Parsons, former council president and current council president, Kim Freeman, for tremendous service to the city as city counselors, along with their very deep portfolio of volunteerism over many years, from River Fair to eclipses to parades to parks and big toys and on and on. When it comes to pride spirit and volunteerism, they got bit by the bug a long time ago and I don't think they're over it. They're just going to shift gears. But Kaiser is a better place and a better city because volunteers like Marlene and Kim really step up and bring their incredible talent and their determination to do a fabulous job for all the people of Kaiser. It has been an absolute delight working with both of you and I'm very thankful, I still have both of you on speed dial if I've got a question. And I'm with Counselor Smith, we can always get together for a glass of wine and, on the weekend and solve the world's problems. You both are fabulous friends, you're both fabulous community volunteers, you've made a difference and I appreciate you both very much. Something that everybody's mentioning tonight is how people step up to volunteer and to help. We've seen that all year long with COVID, with the fire response and on and on. And Counselor Freeman mentioned the rising water. There was a report this afternoon that the people who have been camping at Cascade Gateway Park have been flooded out. So I've already been in contact with Jimmy Jones, he's the executive director of the Midwellamette Valley Community Action Agency and asked him how we might be able to help. So I put him in contact with Commissioner Cameron. I haven't heard back, but I do know that action is being taken to protect the lives of the people who were there, who were camping and that there will be a call to action at some point, that assistance will be needed to serve some very vulnerable people in our community. So I'll put the information out as I get it, but I know that when the call goes out for help for our fellow human being in our community, Kaiser shows up. And I know that we will again in this situation as needed. So I just love that about our community and I know that we'll continue to do that into 2021, taking care of each other with grace and with a great deal of love. Speaking of, the Midwellamette Valley Homeless Alliance, preparations are being made for the Point in Time or PIT count on January 26th. So watch for volunteer opportunities there. We got updates from a number of our partners who are serving people who are homeless or housing insecure. The law enforcement, law enforcement assisted diversion lead program continues to add programming and capacity for taking care of clients so that they aren't, they get services that they need rather than going through the law enforcement portion of services. And that's been a great way to keep people in the services that they need and it's good for our police too, because they know that they can help solve problems rather than, you know, they can bring in resources that people really need. United Way, they've been winding down the food box program that they stepped right into when COVID and the fires hit. They're working with Marion Polk Food Share for a warm handoff there and they're also involved in the long-term recovery for the Sandy Am Canyon. They've been doing, the Food Share reported they've been doing 12,000 food boxes a month. That's up 30% from last year. So please keep that in mind as we're looking at being able to support families in our community is the Marion Polk Food- communities, the Marion Polk Food Share, Kaiser Community Food Bank. The Portland Road Duration Shelter is now open for the next 18 months. The Salem Housing Authority reported that Sequoia Crossing for 70 to 80 more units is getting closer to going to construction. Redwood Crossing is about 80% full now, with people now in permanent supportive housing. And Yakuna Hall is also moving toward 2021 construction, that will add more units. So, great work with partners across our area to provide permanent supportive housing. Salem Kaiser Schools reported that the identified numbers of students who are homeless is less than half of what they normally would find. Computer. Okay. One, two, three. Okay. Are we back now? Okay. I think somebody pointed out, a lot of people are on Netflix now the school's out. So there goes the neighborhood. Housing for families is going to continue to be a need, both shelter and permanent housing. And the schools are trying to partner as much as possible to identify students who are in need. Lastly, I want to, Marion County shared that Camp Taoli, which has camping options for families, is still taking folks, and that's a great place for families who are in transition for housing as well. If folks want to know more about what's being done for families, go to the Early Learning Hub. Lisa Harnish is the Director for Marion County, she's awesome. So go to parentinghub.org. And for some fabulous work being done for Latino families in particular, would be the Salem Kaiser Coalition for Equality. They've remained open and serving families, they've just adapted. And go to their site, and also share with families if you know they have kids in need for educational assistance. The other report I want to bring you up to date on is the Midwell Emmett Valley Council of Governments. The search committee has selected a finalist for the new executive director, and I am on the team that is now going to be undertaking negotiations with that finalist. Once we have an agreed-upon outcome, then we will announce who that person is. I am very excited about this candidate, as this individual was my first, my top pick, as well as a unanimous one from the selection committee. I think that the COAG will be very well served by this next executive director. Looking forward to that very much. Lastly, I want to thank the League of Oregon Cities for continuing every week to bring key people in for our updates on Friday, so we can talk to emergency management, the Governor's Office, Oregon Health Authority, and the National League of Cities, to keep up to date on what's going on with the COVID response, so that we can then get good information out to the people in our community. So thank you to Mike Cully and to the League of Oregon Cities for getting on this right away and keeping this panel accountable to us, but available to us for information. All right, that is all I've got. So that will take us to other business. This time is provided to allow the mayor, city council members, or staff, an opportunity to bring new oral matters before the council that are not on tonight's agenda. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I just want to also say to Councilors Parsons and Freeman, and I'm always floored by people who take their time and do work like city council work, because it is hard work, it's a lot of time and effort, and there are no perks to the job, none. And so, I just, the local government is so amazing, and it's because of people like you that it is amazing. So thank you for inspiring me. Tracy.
All right. I really have nothing, but I do want to echo what Chris just said, thanks. I will miss both of you very much.
Mr. Wood.
I would just like to bring up, maybe you've seen the news today, it looks like the COVID stimulus package has passed through Congress, and now we just need the president's signature. It doesn't look like there's going to be a lot of money, new money coming to the city from that. However, they did extend the deadline for the current amount of money that we have. So I'm kind of taking a deep breath here, a sigh of relief, as we were running up against the wall with a couple of our projects, with the original December 30th deadline. And the new deadline is pushed out till December 2021. So a lot of the projects that we had in place, we'll be able to continue and be able to wrap them up without hurting ourselves, trying to get everything done all at once. So that's a very positive, in my opinion. At this point, with respect to giving funds to St. Vincent de Paul and Salvation Army, and we have issued about $300,000 out, the statistics haven't changed a whole lot from the last time I gave them. However, we'll be doing a follow-up in January, once we get a more solid number for where they end up for the year. Majority of the money is going to housing, that seems to be the biggest issue at the time. Also, the dollar amounts are a little bit larger there in comparison to people's utilities. And I can, there's so many stories that we're hearing every day of people just being able to catch a break and catch their breath, and we're not necessarily riding the ship for all these people, but we're giving them an opportunity to continue on and have a solid go at it. So I think we are making a big difference in our community. And I believe there's some state stuff going on as well. I haven't dug into the details of what happened with all of the excitement today at the Capitol, but I'll be updating you in January as well. So that's really all I got at this point. Thank you.
Chief Teague.
Nothing, Marlene and Kim, thank you.
Mr. Lawyer, people would like to know about stripage.
Well, they're not very visible at night when it rains, now are they?
They don't appear to be.
I think they're a little better than last year. Council may recall, I added another striping for our major roads this year, something that happened, that happened around late September, early October. I really wanted it a little bit later, but the county was only available at that time. So that second coat of paint, I think, did help, but it certainly didn't achieve the results I'd hoped for. To be real honest, I don't know what the solution is. I'll be doing some more research. What I would ask from all of you, feedback from you, is when you are out and about, notice roads, and I'm going to talk about in the county. I don't know who stripes Salem's roads, okay? So I can't, I don't want to use Salem as a comparison, but on all the county roads that you drive on, please pay attention and see if you notice a difference between their roads and our roads, primarily River Road. Because if it's the method, or the materials, or something like that, that the county's using, or the method that they are using, it should be the same on their roads as well. So I'll keep my eyes open, too, but please, if you folks see something, let me know. I mean, especially if you see something that is really bright, really reflective, that's in Marion County, I'd like to know where that is, so I can find out, try to work with them to try and find out what's different between the two locations. I wish I had an answer, I just don't have an answer right now. And I've been watching, and I noticed it probably for the first time, probably about three weeks ago now. And I've kind of been waiting for complaints and issues, questions, all of that to come up, so. Again, I wish I had an answer, I'll keep working on to see what I can do to make it better. It just didn't, that second coat of paint didn't do what I'd hoped to do for this year. So, the other thing I wanted to mention, Mr. Lawyer up on the Parks Board mentioned the Klaya Creek Playground, and I put it in my update, but I'll also tell everybody, that project's now put on hold, finished, to be finished in spring. I'm not sure of a finish date yet. Contractor tried their best to get it done, they got delayed starting because of the smoke, put them behind on other jobs to finish those up, to come to Kaiser to do our job, and the weather, just kind of, I knew it was a risk at the time, letting them try to get it done, but I really feel that we want the best product long-term for our project, and that means wait until spring. Now, the swings will be open, the park will be open, and it will just be the playground that'll be fenced off until they finish up getting the servicing down. So that's about all I got. Unless there's other questions.
Counselor Johnson.
Thank you, Chris. I don't really have anything tonight. My thanks to Marlene and Kim, time went really quick. So appreciate all your work.
Mr. Lawyer, going backwards.
I'm sorry, I forgot to give my regards to Councilors Freeman and Parsons, I really enjoyed working with you, both of you over the years. Marlene, I've worked with you for a long time, career back on Parks Board. Kim, worked with you on council, I've known you for, I won't even say how long, it'd be embarrassing, but thank you for all your efforts and dedication to the community. You made my job easier, and I hope I made your time as councilors easier as well.
Any councilors have any questions that they did not get a chance to ask any of the department directors? Thank you, Madam Mayor.
So, two people on, well, two suggestions that have come across some of the Facebook feed, and before I get to that, if you could put onto the city's Facebook, the response regarding the striping will be helpful, because then we can share your message, rather than continue to rewrite it. I really appreciate that.
Okay, I'll make that happen.
Thank you. And then, people have said, have been posting pictures about these streets somewhere, I think it's in Europe, that have this glow-in-the-dark paint or something like that. I don't know if that's possible, or anyway, it just was intriguing, and so people are looking for answers and posting all sorts of creative things, and then questions about the old box dots.
Yeah, I've considered reflectors, to do reflectors, right, it's really expensive. We could, I've even been thinking the last couple of weeks about a, not interim, but a less-than-ideal reflector setup, something that maybe is one or two reflectors between each strike, each skip stripe. That takes care of the lane, center lane markers, the bike lane markers, fog line markers, and the left turn lane markers. Those are a little more challenging. I haven't completely discounted or written off reflectors. One, like I've said before, they're initially, they're expensive, and they're a maintenance issue. We don't plow streets in Kaiser for snow, but we sweep them regularly, and over time, the sweeper will pick up those reflectors. Even though they're glued down, they will get removed. So it's a, it's a balance, and I'll be working on something to balance and get more visibility for the land markings in the city.
Counselor Herrera had a question.
Counselor Herrera?
Just on that subject, Bill, when I was in Austin, I noticed that they had, some of the roads had permanent little reflectors on the road. Is that something that you researched or seen, have seen before?
I'm not sure what you're referring to as permanent reflectors.
Well, they're like built, like dug into the, embedded into the asphalt.
Yes. Those are done, used a lot on highways. ODOT does a lot of that for freeways. Yeah, that's something that could be done. It's going to, that's going to be expensive, because you've got to have the machine make the grinding in the pavement, then set the reflector in, but that's something I've thought about as well, pursuing.
Thank you.
Well, I think you got some costing, because I know there's a lot of people who can't see those lines, there's a lot of concern, if we get more of these gully washer rains this winter, I don't know what the forecast is, but I think that's probably a good conversation to have.
Okay.
So I'm hearing a lot of support in the community for make it glow.
Okay.
Any other questions? Counselor Kohler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was on a League of Oregon Cities phone call this week that talked about additional funds from Oregon that are grant monies, that cities might be able to help businesses file for those grants. Is that something that, Mr. Wood, you've heard of, or is that something we need to get some information on?
I've heard things floating around that there are on, what, tranche four or five of potential business grants. We would have to dig into the requirements. Our last go-around was, it got rather difficult giving the money out, depending on what the stipulations are. So it could be something we could look at again in the future, but it's just been getting harder and harder with each go-around, trying to give away money.
I know that a lot of those funds are being funneled through Business Oregon, so we can research there.
One of the things that Chris Cummings mentioned, to follow up on what Counselor Kohler said in the call on Friday, was that they are looking at some of the funds that they weren't able to get out, what were the barriers, seeing if they can work through those, so that they aren't barriers to getting the money where it needs to go. So I think this is still in some sort of flux, so I think it's worth taking a look at it again. Did my system...
Okay, anyone else? Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Agenda input, we will meet in regular session. At this point, we are planning to meet on-site at City Hall on January 4th, starting at 7:00 p.m. We will administer the oath of office to our new councilors, Returning Counselor Reed and myself. On January 11th, we will have a work session starting at 6:00 p.m. I believe we'll be doing training, starting some of the work on council goals. And then, January 19th, which is a Tuesday, because of the Monday holiday, which is Martin Luther King Day, we will meet at 7:00 p.m. in regular session. Is there anything else for the good of the order? I want to wish everybody a healthy, safe Christmas, holiday season, and New Year. Take care of each other, and we will see you on January 4th. It is 8:08, and we are adjourned.